Our invocation will be provided by Laura Dean Wiley and from Epic Church. Please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge allegiance. Sorry, Laura Dean Wiley. Do we have a stand-in for the invocation? Would you like to do it?
Yeah, absolutely.
And please give us your name, Muriel.
My name is Muriel Looman, 627 South Main Street.
Thank you.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we gather tonight as citizens and believers in the goodness of man and city. We love our community, Father, and we know you do too, and you want to see the very best for us. So I pray a blessing upon this gathering, I pray love, contentment, I pray comfort, I pray a sense of camaraderie and love between all, and I pray that you will, through your grace and mercy, will guide, through your Holy Spirit, the things that are discussed this evening, and may all things work for your glory, and you be glorified in all your ways. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you would please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spheres?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next, we have citizen's request, and the first person to speak is Lisa Langdale, and is Lisa here? Okay. Lisa, please approach and...
My name is Lisa Langdale, and I'm here tonight not just speaking for myself and my family, but also representing my fellow neighbors and friends. I grew up here in Independence, and my husband and I raised our sons in this city. I've belonged to various community groups, including Junior Service League, Optimists, and School PTAs. My father was actually Director of Public Works for this city for nearly thirty years. For the past twenty-nine years, my family has lived in what I would have previously called a quiet neighborhood in southeast Independence. I'm here tonight to voice a real concern we have for the safety of our city. On the early morning of May 7th, my neighborhood was awakened to a shootout between individuals that rented an Airbnb two houses away from me. My family sat huddled together in our home while more than forty rounds were fired. Multiple bullets ripped through our home and our cars, as well as our neighbors' homes. Some bullets ripped through the bedrooms of their sleeping children. From our first call to 911, it was thirteen minutes before the police entered our street. By that time, the exchange of bullets had stopped. In that amount of time, we had watched the shooters brazenly walk up and down our street, and in that amount of time, we had watched them leave. No arrests were made, and none still to this day. This terrorizing and traumatic event was not on the news, not in any paper, and it was not posted on any social media. If myself, along with my concerned neighbors, didn't speak out, this sickening event would remain in the dark. Over the past two months, multiple calls were made to the police department by myself and other neighbors regarding the incident, but those calls were not returned until I set a meeting with the interim chief of police. We are here sharing tonight, not only because we believe the council and our fellow citizens need to be made aware of the growing crime in our city, but also made aware of the response of the Independence Police Department. After meeting with interim police chief, it's our understanding that our city is in great need of more officers. The crime in our city is growing while our police force is shrinking. I would like to ask the mayor, and the city manager, and the council why they believe this is the case. Is there an underlying morale issue or leadership issue within our police department? Is there a lack of funding? Is there a lack of approval to allocate the needed funds? Is there a lack of support for our officers? Does our city back the blue or follow the national narrative to defund the police? I would like to ask you, mayor and city manager, if forty rounds of bullets are being fired in your neighborhood and multiple bullets are ripping through your home, as you sit huddled in fear with your family, would a thirteen-minute response time be enough for you? In addition to the shortage of police officers, dustmen advise laws have been passed that restricted detaining and arresting the suspected four individuals that returned to that same Airbnb only hours after the shooting. To us, these new laws serve to embolden the criminal while leaving the victim feeling powerless. The individuals involved appeared to be young men, if not in fact teenagers. They threatened multiple lives, young and old, and with no consequence. And while you didn't hear about the shooting, I'm sure all of their friends have been sharing it. That gives them the empowerment to go out and continue to commit crimes and believe they will get away with it, while the law-abiding citizens have limited police protection. The laws that work to the advantage of the criminal do not bring safety and comfort to us. It's becoming more apparent of the growing need to defend yourself. We are a neighborhood of active registered voters. I believe many of you may have run your campaigns with promises to improve our city and make this city a safer place to live. Our hope is that you genuinely care about Independence and work to make our city a safer place. Otherwise, the good citizens of Independence will be forced to abandon it. I do believe in the good people of Independence, and I want our city to be a place where we feel safe and proud, a place where families want to live, work, and play, a city where families want to raise their children. I ask you to be committed to the same. I would ask that you address our concerns, give direction, and leadership. Additionally, I would like to ask if there are any city guidelines or measures in place that would help to bring awareness to address the safety concerns in neighborhoods where Airbnbs exist. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laura Dominic. Laura, are you here? Thank you, no worries.
I was in my head there for a second, not answering your question, I apologize. Laura Dominic, 3525 Blue Ridge Boulevard. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am again speaking on bill 22771, the same as last week, so I'm on a three-minute limit, and I don't think I'll even take two. So, over the weekend, I again reviewed the policies and procedures that were attached to this bill, this resolution for tonight's meeting, and unfortunately, the document is still not up to date. It does not include four changes that we made that were adopted by the city council in June of 2018. And one of those was that if you are hired on or after July 1st of 2019, you will not have your health insurance paid for when you retire, which was top of mind, was one I remembered, so I did check for that. So I apologize that I didn't catch that in my review before I spoke for the last week's meeting. Those changes, they don't impact the bill that you're looking at tonight, but I just think it would be important for you guys to have a complete and thorough, accurate document to review before. So I just would like to reiterate that you, my request from last week, that you give us an opportunity to discuss this bill at a personnel board meeting, so that we understand the expectations you have of us, especially as it relates to section five of the bill. So that's my ask, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. This brings us to our consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any councilmember wishing to pull any items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Can you please pull number seven from the reports and recommendations, and number 22782 from the resolutions?
And that was 22872?
I'm sorry, 22782.
22872.
22782.
782, all right. Thank you, councilmember. So you would like to pull number seven, if I'm hearing you correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
And 22782?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other items to be pulled for consideration? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll for the consent items minus the items that we have pulled?
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember, you've got the floor on the items that you wanted to pull and discuss.
On number seven, I don't have any commentary at this time, I'll just move for approval on it.
Second?
Let me hear, I just want to clarify that, so you just...
I do not have any...
You don't have any commentary?
At this time.
At this time, okay.
Just I'll move for approval.
So you've moved for item number seven to be approved, we've got a second, and we can proceed with a roll call on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number seven. Well, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's what I was waiting for. I'm going to be voting no, just simply because I feel there's a better use for the $81,000 and nothing really beyond that. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I, I'm curious, what, did we, did we approve this as a council, Mr. Walker? Is this something that we approved this minute?
You have used this firm in the past for guidance with the Downtown Redevelopment Committee report when that was initially adopted. This specific work has not been approved by this council prior to coming forward to you tonight.
Okay, so we have not approved this particular amount?
No.
I didn't think so.
You're correct in your understanding.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so, yeah, I won't be voting to approve, and thank you.
Any other discussion on item number seven? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Mr. Councilmember, would you like to talk about 22782?
Yeah, I kinda, I don't agree with this, specifically, section number two. It states that if a city council member wants to bring an item for the city council, they have to first go to a study session. I don't feel, I feel like this only diminishes my ability to represent the people that elected me, and if one of the constituents did want to basically talk about this, we don't allow them to speak during study sessions, so I'll be voting no on this.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I, too, have some concerns on this as well. There's not too many things, us as legislators, that we do have, other than that we can bring legislation to this body for full discussion. Now, it's under the privy that whoever puts forth those resolutions, ordinances, non-ordinances, actions, do their homework and do it well, and present a case to the council as a full body for discussion. I don't want to limit that, so I, too, will vote no on this.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Do we need to go back and have a discussion on what to change about it?
I would just prefer a vote.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Please, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda... This brings us to public hearings, so let's open a public hearing. Proceed.
A public hearing for the application by Jeremy Taylor requesting a special use permit to operate a body art services business at 13700 East US 40 Highway, Suite F. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This special use permit was considered by Planning Commission on June 14th. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this special use permit. This permit's for a tattoo studio along 40 Highway near Nolan Fashion Square. This applicant was approved previously for a site near the Independence Square, but that lease agreement did not work out. I have no new information to add.
That will close the public hearing, and then, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 22-060, An Ordinance Approving a Special Use Permit to Operate a Body Art Services Business at 13700 East US 40 Highway, Suite F, in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this bill?
I'll, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Not to drag it out or anything, I've met this gentleman, and he has done some high-end tattoo work on Chiefs players, and he's kind of locally known. I think we're fortunate to have him in Independence, so, and heck, something else in Nolan Fashion Square won't hurt, so I think it's great.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That'll bring us to an open, a public hearing. Here we go, Madam City Clerk.
A public hearing for the application by Vivian and Ray Webster requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial to R6 Single Family Residential for the property located at 1131 South Glenwood Avenue. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning application was also considered by Planning Commission on June 14th. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this rezoning. What this does is it takes a legal non-conforming property that is currently a residential area that's a C2 to an R6, so the property owner can actually sell and refinance the home. I have no new information to add.
Okay, thank you. That'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 22-061, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 1131 South Glenwood Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Please, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And Madam City Clerk, would you please read the next bill?
It's a public hearing.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Mitchell Carson requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial to R6 Single Family Residential for the property located at 1126 South Cottage Avenue. New information only.
Again, thank you. This is a rezoning application that was also considered on the June 14th Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this. This is also very similar, taking a legal non-conforming property that's owned C2 to an R6 for rehabilitation and refinancing. I have no new information to add.
That'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Bill number 22-062, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 1126 South Cottage Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And this will open up the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
A public hearing for the application by G&amp;B Holdings LLC requesting a rezoning from I-1 Industrial to R6 Single Family Residential for the property located at 1314 West South Avenue. New information only.
Again, thank you. This rezoning application was also on June 14th. We had a lot of them. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this rezoning. This also takes a legal non-conforming property that is a residential home and makes it available for resale and refinancing, so I have no new information to provide.
Okay, thank you. So close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Bill number 22-063, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District R6 Single Family Residential for 1314 West South Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
This will be another public hearing. Mr. Arroyo?
A public hearing for the application by Matthew Coburn requesting a rezoning from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R12 Two Family Residential for the properties located at 8905, 8907, 8909 East Lexington Avenue. New information only.
Again, thank you. This rezoning application was also on June 14th. The Planning Commission did recommend in favor of it. This will take three properties that are currently legal non-conforming residential properties, one of which is a duplex from a C1 to an R12, for the purpose of refurbishing. I have no new information to add.
Okay, thank you. This will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-064, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District C1 Neighborhood to District R12 Two Family Residential for 8905, 8907, and 8909 East Lexington Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I have a question for Mr. Arroyo. How do we get these legal non-conforming properties? Just curiosity.
Well, in many, many past years, we had what was called pyramid zoning, where you were allowed to basically put a use, it's something that may have been a higher use, so you could have a residential in a C1 district. There was also some periods of time back when we did the comprehensive plan that took some properties that were maybe rezoned into certain commercial districts, but typically, it's that pyramid rezoning that we've had from like back in the 1920s and 30s. So a lot of that is what a lot of these properties are in. So they were in commercial districts, you know, sometimes along Nolan Road, Truman Road, something like that, where they're residential properties, but then they were C2s or C1s. So that's typically how we got it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, and just this particular meeting, for whatever reason, we had...
We just have a bunch of them, yeah. No, I was really curi-, it's interesting, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing, okay. Public hearing, Mr. Arroyo?
A public hearing for the application by Wayne Zambelli requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial to C3 Service Commercial for the property located at 10725 East Truman Road. New information only.
Thank you again, the last one. This rezoning application was also considered by Planning Commission on June 14th. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this rezoning. This will take a current lawn care business that is currently a C2 to a C3 for the purpose of storing lawn equipment in the outside. I have no new information to add.
Okay, thank you. This will close the public hearing.
Bill number 22-065, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District C3 Service Commercial for the property at 10725 East Truman Road in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Okay, this takes us to non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-771, A Resolution Affirming the City Council's Adherence to Certain Provisions of the City's Personnel Policies and Procedures, as well as Certain Administrative Policies of the City of Independence.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I have a problem with this for a few reasons. First of all, I think it really goes against what the charter already lays out for elected officials, which is what we are. We're not employees of the city. We were elected to serve as citizens of Independence. No matter how you spin it, that's what we are, elected officials, not employees. I heard something earlier that the charter didn't have any, basically, didn't have any teeth for uncertain things. Well, I don't think this resolution does either, because as one of our speakers stated last week, that they didn't really understand what the Board of Personnel would be doing anyway if this was forwarded to them. The charter already lays out ways that elected officials can be removed, and I just don't think this resolution does what the intent of it is. With all that said, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to send this to the Board of Personnel to have them weigh in on it, because I think before anything needs to be done, go ahead and let, I mean, because it mentions them in there, it mentions anything will be done, so I'll make a motion to have it sent to them before any other action is
Second.
There's a motion and second to send this to the Board of Personnel, if I'm hearing you correctly, councilmember?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that item?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I, I am firmly and passionately in support of this. As it stands now, if an employee is sexually harassed, or faces a hostile work environment, or discriminated against, they have an outlet. Not only can they seek legal representation, but they can file a complaint with the city's HR department. And in every workplace, at least over five employees, these are the, these are the rules. When this charter was written, it, it doesn't talk about bad behavior of council members as employees at all. It's highly deficient on council members being able to be held responsible for their conduct. It is not so distant past that council members, well, these are only supposition, but have acted in such a way that have made city employees feel uncomfortable and unable to do their jobs properly. Frankly, there's no reason not to agree to a policy like this. And secondly, regardless of Mr. Stewart respectfully, of you putting us in some position that's not an employee, every one of us up here gets a paycheck, we get cash money, we get health insurance, we get a car allowance, we get a cellphone allowance, some expenses you can even be reimbursed for. So if you are willing to take taxpayer money and serve in a voluntary job, you should absolutely be willing to be held accountable, like any of the other citizens that work here and that we work for. So I see, I see no reason to postpone this or get more input. It's, in my opinion, it's time to get some work done, and it's time to make sure that all the employees out there know, we consider ourselves to be on an equal level. We're not your bosses, and we're not special. We're human beings that volunteered to do a job that we're being compensated for by taxpayer dollars, a number of which I see sitting in this auditorium. So I will be voting no to continue it, and I will absolutely be voting yes to pass the bill if it does not get continued.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I have many questions of how we're gonna, how we're gonna make this work. I think the Charter is very clear on the position of elected officials, and let's make it very clear. My bosses sit in the 3rd District. They hire me, they fire me through elections. That's who I'm accountable to, that's who I work for, that's who I rise up and every morning and look for ways to better do my job and to better serve the people of the 3rd District. I'm not asking for special privilege, but I know that this much is true. I'm not opposed to these courses, I've taken these, these same type of standards, the things that are being offered here or asked of us. It's not that I'm opposed to it, it's just that I never interviewed outside of a forum in the district that I ran. I didn't interview with HR, I didn't interview with the city manager, I interviewed with the people of the 3rd District. I hold my life, or my responsibility to them. My contact with this city sits right here at this desk. That's Mr. Walker. That's who I'm supposed to interact with, that's who I direct my questions to, that's who I respond to, and he responds to me. So I, too, have concerns about, Mr. Stewart wrote questions to our city councillor, I've read through his responses, and I have more questions on it. I'm not saying, I think this deserves more discussion before we just vote on it and say, yes, we want to be, everybody has to be equal, and we all get a trophy, and we all go home. I think there's much more at stake. There is liability on both sides, and I think that we need to have a better, clearer understanding. I was hoping for a meeting, I was actually promised a meeting with some of my colleagues and the city manager. I've yet to have that, and I'm going to support the postponement until I feel like we can get the answers. I've asked for things as simple as the cost, because they'll have, some of these courses will have to be designed specific to city councilpeople. I've yet to get the cost figures. I would like to see the syllabus. I'd like to know what, what are the expectations, what are the standards that they're going to set? I'd like to have some input of that. So I'm going to support, and I don't see why it's wrong for us to take the time, if we're going to do this, and do it right. And that's why I'm going to support the motion to extend this.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Since I was brought up directly, Councilman Hobart, let me, nobody up here thinks that city councilmembers are being asked inappropriately. I agree with you on the premise of this, I really do. My point is, it has no teeth. Let me ask a question. Mr. City Manager, if a city employee does something wrong, whatever, violates city policies, what's the procedure? I mean, is it normally, you know, they, verbal warning, a written warning, maybe a suspension, and then they're terminated, right?
Yeah, it depends on, obviously, the nature of the violation, but generally speaking, if we're talking about some kind of discipline, it's progressive in nature, as you just lined out. Now, obviously, some offenses are more severe than others, so some may merit immediate termination rather than progressive discipline, but mostly our circumstances to your general idea are progressive in nature.
Okay. Mr. Langford, to the best of your knowledge, if we were accused of something on this body, would we follow that same process? I mean, can we be written up? Can we be, you know, can we be suspended? Can we be fired?
As things stand right now, no.
I mean, would this resolution change that? I mean, if we really want to do something, we need to change the Charter, which, you know, we got that, you know, we got that review committee. I mean, that's how it needs to be done, not like this. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Langford, can I ask you a couple of questions, please? Are you familiar with other cities that have these policies for their elected officials, that they are in fact accountable to both their citizens and also accountable to the employees that work at the city, and also accountable to their colleagues on the dais with regards to how they should behave in public and what responsibilities they have? What is your kind of general feed on that?
Mayor, unfortunately, no. I don't have any understanding of what other cities might be doing at this time.
Okay. So, very, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, you, what was your employment in Kansas City again?
What?
When you worked for the city of Kansas City?
The years? Or would I?
What'd you do?
Oh, I was a Cooking Ham Knoll Fellow, thanks for asking, and then worked in the Budget Office prior to coming here.
Okay. Are you familiar with that city, or perhaps our sister cities, as to whether they have these style of rules for councilmembers?
There are general, like, the one that's coming off of my mind right now, immediately when this Mayor Rowland just asked, because I know, like, Lee Summit, for example, has specific travel guidelines for councilmembers. You know, there's policies for city staff to travel, but then councilmembers in their capacity. So I don't think it's unheard of to have guidelines for elected officials, but those are always, I want to be clear, always set by the governing body about how they want to administer themselves, set standards for themselves, conduct their affairs, et cetera. It would not be appropriate for us as staff to tell you to do this or to do that, given our relationship, the supervisor-employee relationship, of course.
Mr. Walker, would this make you our boss so that you could suspend and fire us?
I don't believe so. The resolution as written lays out a process that says the Chief Human Resources Officer would have to write a summary report of what has happened, or the nature of the allegation, and then that would be carried forward to the Personnel Board for a review. I know in the summary that Councilmember Steinmeier referenced from our city attorney that, you know, talked about maybe what some of those disciplinary things could be, but termination, suspension, those aren't things that could be leveled, nor anybody could, unless, as the Charter says, there's grounds for the council to remove one of its members. There's nothing else that would supersede that and allow for that outcome that you just asked.
Okay. Thank you, that's all. I'll still be voting for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Question for Mr. Langford. I guess the question that I really have, the way I read this, is that essentially what we are doing by, if we pass this, is that we are agreeing to abide by these policies and procedures, which, you know, are, in general, you know, drug and alcohol policies, cellular telephone, city meetings and records, cybersecurity, driver's license, and a few others. Now, I do have concern about one, which I'll raise in amendment, depending on how the, we deal with the motion to refer, but in general, my understanding is we're just saying that we're going to abide by these policies. Isn't that what, is that not really accurate, you know, is that accurate, I guess?
That seems an accurate reflection of how I have read the resolution, yes.
I mean, I want to abide by these kinds of policies, because I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, and I don't think anybody up here would disagree with that, and yet, you know, we're kind of in the weeds on this a little bit. So I'll be voting yes for this, and I'll be voting against the motion to refer, but I'd like to deal with it at this time, and again, I have a motion to amend if, depending on how the motion to refer goes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
So I just want to say, I don't have a problem by abiding by these policies. I, my whole issue is, what's the, what if we don't? I mean, what if somebody doesn't? And I think it's just a big waste of time by referring it to the Board of Personnel when there's really not much teeth to it. I mean, there's nothing they can really do. That's my entire point of it.
And so what, if I'm hearing you correctly, city councilmember, is you would like to work diligently on making sure this has teeth going forward, because I don't see what, from your argument, and I'm trying to understand your argument, is you're basically saying this needs more teeth, but you're not really saying that you're...
I don't think it can be given teeth because of the way the Charter reads.
From your perspective?
From my perspective.
Okay.
I mean, there's not really a discipline or any action that can be taken, I mean, not really, you know. I mean, I don't have a problem with abiding by this stuff. I already abide by all this stuff, you know?
Right.
I don't have a problem with that. Nobody does. Nobody up here does, I don't think, you know? That's the reason I see the point of it, I just really don't see the larger point of it. And I mean, if the, I think if the Personnel Board wants to look at it, I think they, you know, we have a member here that asks us to, she wants to see it, I mean, let them look at it, you know? She made the recommendation, not me.
Okay.
Just giving her the, giving it the opportunity.
So what I'm also hearing, if I may hear you correctly, city councilmember, is you would like the Charter to actually be brought up to date so that it can actually address this issue, is what I'm also hearing you say.
If it was going to be done, that's how it needs to be done, is through the Charter.
Okay. And, but, but my question is, I see you kind of leaning towards, we need a new city charter in order to do that.
I don't, I, maybe this isn't the time for the discussion of the city charter.
That's fine. I appreciate the guardrails on that, my friend, but I will just, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I know that you and I have had conversations on this as of last week, and I know I was sick, but we discussed the, my request just to have a meeting and discuss this in further detail.
Okay.
And I was kind of hoping this would happen, and I had my calendar open all day.
Can, we call a recess right now. Can you and I talk offline here just for a second? Maybe a four or five minute recess, please. Thank you all for your indulgence of the time there as we work out some of the details. Any further discussion on the motion in front of us with regard... Any further discussion on the motion in front of us with regards to... Moving it to the Personnel Board if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Councilmember?
No, no more.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm still going to vote to no to send it to the Personnel Board, but I would make a, depending on what happens, if that fails, I would make a motion to post, to table this and, for two weeks, until we have a chance to have everybody have discussions.
Okay.
If you're willing to make that motion, I'm willing to withdraw mine.
So I'm hearing you withdrawing your motion?
If he's willing to make the other one, yes.
Right.
Let's, I would then move to postpone this item until the next regularly scheduled council meeting for further discussion.
Okay. Do I have a second? We have, very good. And I'm considering this, I want to make this clear for everyone. Councilmember Stewart, you withdrew your motion. That took that off the table, therefore we could put the table motion on, on the table. And we have a second. Any further discussions on the table?
Are we, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Are we going to discuss this in a study session? Is that the plan?
We certainly can.
Further discussion?
I'm open for it.
I'm asking Councilmember Hobart, is that your thinking?
Whatever you'd like, I'd be fine with that.
Would that be good for you, Councilmember?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll for tabling the item for two weeks and putting it on the study session in the meantime. And I expanded upon that motion, so I hope no one is concerned about my expansion of that motion. Please proceed.
Councilmember, sorry. Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Madam City Clerk? Please proceed.
Bill number 22-057, ordinance terminating tax increment financing within redevelopment project number one of the Nolan Road and 23rd Street redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund account related thereto and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Second and final reading.
Okay. Any discussion?
I actually have one question to ask our city manager, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, we actually had a TIF that finished and paid itself out, right? Tell me how this ended.
This, this project has concluded. All of the public improvements that were submitted for and all of that have been completed. The council, I don't remember, about a year ago, had adopted a new policy to set up the TIF Reserve Fund. So if approved tonight, this project would be dissolved. All of the taxing jurisdictions would start to receive their increment that had been flowing to the TIF will now flow to their budgets, with the exception of the city where ours is flowing into that TIF General Reserve Fund to help pay the debt service on our other outstanding loans, burdens, debts, et cetera.
It's not necessarily the most exciting news, but it's a TIF that was successful, and now we can use it to help with some of our ones that aren't. So I think that's good.
Very good news. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
That brings us to first readings, if I'm correct? Oh, one more. I missed that one. Okay.
Bill number 22-058, an ordinance finding determining declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements for the 34th Terrace Bank Stabilization Project, project number 131802. Authorizing the negotiation imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 22-066, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $698,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the Police Department for impaired driving enforcement and youth alcohol liquor compliance checks for October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders and/or time extensions for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number 22-067, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $347,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the Police Department for a crash investigation software license, LET SAC conference fees, and hazardous moving violations enforcement from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number 22-068, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $73,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the Police Department for occupant protection enforcement from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number 22-069, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $62,230 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of product support program development fees, computer software and equipment for the Police Department for e-ticketing from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number 22-070, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to mini-storage facilities. Bill number 22-071 is an appropriation ordinance which may receive two readings this evening. 22-071, an ordinance adopting amendments to fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19340. Bill number 22-071, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19340. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. This brings us to information-only items. Okay. That brings us to Councilmember comments. And I'm going to start with you, Councilmember, and work down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, I've noticed a lot of uptick recently with armed security in the city, more privately armed security. Like, I can't go to a quick trip without seeing one. And I don't really have a huge objection to this because I think, I think we need more good guys with guns, you know, especially with a lot of the stuff's been going on. But I guess my question relates to, I know Kansas City regulates the industry. You know, they make sure that these companies, they, they have insurance and they make sure that, you know, these officers that are out there, they, they qualified at a range, things like that, and make sure they're not felons. That's a good thing, too. Do we do anything like that in the city?
Yeah, good observation. Actually, we do. We require both the company and the officer who are working to get a license to work in the city. They have to do the background check, get the permits, as I mentioned. So we do know who's working in our city and that they are appropriately qualified to do so.
Okay, thank you. And I guess since I was first up, Councilmember Hobart asked about this last week as far as the police overtime. Is there any more update on that?
Yes.
You can provide?
Yes, happy to, and thank you for asking. The report has been completed by the special counsel, Dan Nelson, and his team that worked on that investigation. A summary of that is going to be made public tomorrow. There's a media briefing tomorrow at 10:15 at the Independence Utility Center on 23rd Street, just to the east of 291. Members of the press are being notified and made aware of that. And then, once that briefing concludes, the summary of the findings and recommendations will be made available publicly as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Please proceed.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Nothing for me tonight either.
Very good. Councilmember?
Just one thing. I, I just wanted to recognize your concerns and just say to you that when I, when I was running at the door, many people were concerned about violence and, and the uptick of violence, violent crime. And I know that our Police Department, they do everything they can to keep our city safe. And I will always champion their efforts. One of the things that I would like to say is that it's deflating when they go out and catch bad guys in the act. And we take them through the process, and we have a prosecutor who, who somehow believes that being soft on crime makes us safer. And it doesn't. No one, no one that I've ever asked that question to is, do you feel safer when we're being soft on crime? And I've never heard anybody say they, they feel safer. So as a city, I'm hoping that we will begin to send a clear message to our county prosecutor that when we arrest folks, we expect them to be prosecuted for the, for the violations of those crimes. And so we need to have the backs of our, our first responders. And so, to me, it's not just a city problem, it's a county problem as well. And so, I, I sympathize with, with your frustration, but understand that our, our PD does the very best they can do with the manpower that they have. But we have got to have a firmer stance on being tough on crime in our city. And we have to send a message that it's... I'm sorry? I understand. I understand. I understand. But, but what I'm saying to you is, when there's arrests made, oftentimes they're released before our men and women even get their paperwork done. We have to have a firm stance at the county level to prosecute crime. So it's, it's a layered issue. And, and I'm with you, but I want you to also take into consideration of where the crimes are prosecuted. So, and I stand with you on it. So, we, we will continue to do better. We need to, we have to. Our residents require it and demand it, that we, we keep them as safe as possible. So, I heard you tonight. That's the, that's the one thing I wanted you to hear, is that. And we will continue the, the discussion and the conversation.
Thank you. I, I wanted to recognize you folks, too. I, you're not regulars at council meetings and probably mostly live your lives outside of this sort of madhouse. I can't even imagine what that must have felt like that night. I can't imagine being a parent of a child that a bullet shot through your house or within inches or feet of your child or yourself. I'm really sorry that happened. I, we do need to do something. And I'm so sorry for that. I had a happy thing, I'm going to save it for later, but I do have a couple things for you, Mr. Walker. Actually, just one I'm going to ask you about. Do we have any way to keep track of people that do short-term rentals?
Yes, and if you'll indulge just for a moment, our community development director, Tom Skennell, did quite a bit of extensive work on this. So I could have him just give a very quick summary if you are interested in that this evening.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I know how much Tom likes to talk, though.
Good evening, mayors, mayor, and members of the council. Sorry about that.
Sometimes it feels like they're all mayors, trust me.
To answer the question about the short-term rental, the city has a well-defined process in which short-term rentals have, have to go through in order before they, they operate. After they are approved, there's also licensing that has to occur. And then there's annual inspections of those units to ensure that those units are still safe and still operating within the bounds of what the city has set out as far as the regulations.
Do we, do we have any regulations that prohibit or limit the amount of people that can rent an Airbnb?
Yes, yes. Within the UDO, we have the limit of no more than two adults per bedroom. If you have, if you happen to have a large house with a large number of bedrooms, no more than, than 10 persons can be in that house. So if someone decides to, to break that rule and have 30 people there, we do have the ability to pull their approval for their special, or short-term rental. We also have limitations on how many can concentrate within a neighborhood. We have a distance requirement. We went through this with the planning commission, and ultimately the City Council approved that, those regulations, a little over a year ago.
Do we have any increased insurance requirements?
We have the regular insurance requirements for all businesses. So we have, so we, it's, it's the same.
I, thank you very much, Mr. Skennell. I appreciate the information. Mr. Walker, I, I would like to see what we can do. I'd like to, as we talk about sinking teeth into policy tonight, I would like to see what we could do to strengthen that policy or speed up the ability to enforce some of those rules and yank people's licensing. I would also like to know if we can require an extra insurance policy? So if something like this occurs, that people actually have a genuine remedy?
Sorry, hey, yes. We'd be happy to research that. I know this is a evolving issue
It is.
in our country. So I'm certain that since the time that we adopted this, that there's probably been additional best practices that have been identified. So we'll be happy to go back and take a look at this and see what we might be able to do to strengthen that and put those additional enforcement mechanisms in there.
Yeah. Anything we can do to prevent a rental like this from happening? I don't know if it was done legally and then exploited, but... There we go. Let's, let's, let's take a look at that, too.
Anything else?
You can get ahold of us, folks, any of us, if you have more ideas for that. Thank you. Nothing else, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. And I know we're talking about this issue. If you could stay at, this evening, just for a few moments, I would love to have a discussion with you. I may have to do one or two things before that. So if I walk away, it's not because I intend to. I do want to come back and, and talk to you, okay? Very, very good. We've seen a lot of discussion tonight on a number of major things. I think it's incredibly important as we, as elected officials, you know, hold ourselves accountable and to a higher standard. And with that, I will close by saying my now-famous line from a lot of people is, we can't manage a secret. So if we're going to run this organization and this city in a, in a proper way, we can't manage a secret. So with that, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.